I will now call the January 11, 2023 San Diego County Board of Supervisors' Land Use Meeting to order. First, I'm going to ask our clerk to confirm that we have quorum.
Thank you Chair Vargas. Thank you Chair Vargas. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that Vice Chair Lawson Reimer is absent today. With that, I will now call the roll. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Fletcher.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
And Chair Vargas.
Vargas here. Thank you. There is no report back from closed session at this time. We are not going to proceed with non-agenda public communications. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not an item on today's agenda. The only action that the board may take is a referral to the chief administrative officer. A reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments, which is four minutes. And to better facilitate the meeting, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers via phone, and the rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's meeting. Clerk, do we have requests to speak?
Thank you Chair Vargas. We have 24 total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, four individuals in person, and 20 requesting to speak by phone. For those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. And we'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals and tell it is your turn to speak. You'll then have two minutes to address the board. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals: Mark, Bryant, Robert, and Audra. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please state by, if you could please start by stating your name for the audio record.
Chair Nora, may I have three minutes and steps here? Excuse me? Would that, yes? No? Okay. Mark, so yesterday, I mentioned that Jeff had the last meeting, and several other people have informed you guys of the Klaus Schwab video where he literally says verbatim that he's penetrating governments, that he has penetrated governments. And we all know that Nathan is a member, a young global leader. His membership is, you can just Google his name and his membership comes up. So I want to know why you didn't do anything yesterday, why you're not saying anything now. I didn't request for him to go to jail or be hung by the neck. I just think, well, it's not think. Obviously, committing treason, he can't be in our government in any way. So why is that, Nora? Like, why haven't you done something to, to remove him? I'm waiting. Because this video right here, the title of this video on YouTube, and if any of you out there want to take a picture with your cellphone right now, this video, in one, the first minute and a half, you can see Klaus Schwab saying he's penetrated governments for the World Economic Forum. That's a foreign power that does not have our interest at heart, and Nathan's a member. And here's a quote from Nathan, like I showed you yesterday. A quote where Nathan says, "Excited to be in Davos for the annual meeting of the World Economic Forum. It is cold but sunny." What do you need? It says direct to treason, you can be, all I'm asking you to do is remove him. Their silence should tell you a lie. You guys should be looking this up. They're not going to do this for you. This is real treason. Look it up. Take a picture.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to the next speaker.
All right, Brian Rumbaw. So I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and continue kind of more or less what I was talking about yesterday. I was talking about a specific event that occurred in Riverside County, pretty much on the 29th of December, where that sheriff's deputy was murdered, okay? When they caught up with him, the perp, okay, he ended up, he was pretty much rammed via a armored vehicle, and he continued to open fire on our deputies. What happened is, obviously, he was, he was killed. Now, after this happened, a lot of truth came out about the entire situation. More or less, that gentleman was actually released by a judge after being a third-strike offender. It came out that he was a member of a notorious biker gang, okay? We as a society need to recognize, we are living in a, in a, in a time and place where liquor, drugs, gangs, they're raising a lot of the men in our society, okay? The policies that this board implements, it does have an effect. Everything in this world is interrelated, okay? We need to all do some self-introspection. When Sheriff Bianco asked for that, that guy to be, that judge to be removed from office, that was a good thing. Ultimately, you know, how does, how does a heart get that cold? We as a society need to fix things, and a big part, big part of it is going to be implementing good governance. I, I have nothing against any of you guys. You guys are existing in a system that is obviously collapsing, okay, at every level with what we've witnessed the last couple of years. I have nothing against law enforcement personnel. I, I do respect the ones that understand the Constitution, because that is what separated this country. That's what gave us this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I apologize. Could I get three minutes so we don't go through that situation that I was here last time where you got to bang the gavel? I'll promise not to use, I'll try and stay under two minutes, but, you know, if I go 10 seconds over, do we really have to do that?
I suggest you start, sir.
Nope.
Go ahead.
Two minutes?
Just go ahead.
Okay. Robert Gurman. For the, the first slide shows why Gillespie Field, a GA-designated airport, asked you for authorization for an $8 million handout from the FAA. FAA grant money is not free money. It has strings. The biggest problem is the grant money has to be paid back in the event the community would like to use their property for something other than an airport. The bigger the grant, the more protection the airport has. The FAA debt the airport incurs makes it too expensive for communities to use their own property for the best interest of their citizens. The grant system is self-dealing. It is also called an airport protection grant by some. More and more communities are saying no to the FAA. Santa Clara, Santa Monica, and East Hampton on the East Coast, you name the biggest, that are just saying no. Another threat to Gillespie and all of GA is the banning of leaded avgas by the EPA, which is presently progressing through the federal system. Is the FAA going to subsidize all 20,000 GA airports to retrofit for unleaded fuel? Of course not. Again, more debt, more likely, the FAA will protect their investment with another grant for unleaded fuel at that airport, Gillespie. All this grant money for GA airports like Gillespie. Gillespie is old, unsafe, outdated, toxic, sitting on the most polluted land at the bottom of a box canyon in El Cajon. Somebody must be making a lot of money at Gillespie to not want a new airport at Miramar. San Diego, like the nation, simply cannot afford, nor do we need, all these GA airports. Our commercial airports are suffering because of this waste of aviation money on GA airports. Gillespie is a perfect example of these backward priorities. The second slide shows what could be built at Miramar. The next time you fly into Sacramento, our state capital, look at what San Diego should have for its citizens, first responders, responders and businesses, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, may I get three minutes? What? Weird. So weird. Using a name, Audra, was just wondering if you have my bathroom ready? My litter box? You do? Where is it? Because I'm not sure where to go. So it is? Did you guys get a litter box? You didn't? That's so not inclusive. I mean, I'm creating jobs here. I don't understand. Are we not being inclusive with everybody? So I just, should I just go wherever? Should I use a bag like this? I mean, should I just? Good to know. Yeah. It's quite funny that you won't even acknowledge that Nathan is a part of the World Economic Forum and is engaging in treason, but then I'm thinking, well, you won't even acknowledge I was beaten out in the hall. So I mean, why would you acknowledge that your best friend is in bed with global leaders, is a global leader, and is set and hell-bent on destroying humanity? So I mean, that's a problem, but I mean, we can even have Anthony Ray sitting over here when I'm being beaten out in the hall. It's good, and he's just, you know, squirming in his seat like, oh my gosh, this is, oh, what do I do? But then he's getting awards, right? It's so good. It's so good to see that you guys are really, you know, for the people and that you want to help the people. Instead, you want to ignore that kind of stuff. But I guarantee if I punched you in the face or gave you a black eye like I had or a concussion, I would be in jail right now. And, and I wouldn't be even seeing the light of day for quite some time. Yet we can have Gonzalez, badge number 20283, sitting down there, working where, I mean, so, nothing. I mean, he's in an eternal affairs investigation, and he's still on the job where he beat me. It's so great. Like, I love that you guys really care. It's so good. It's good. I mean, yeah. Right? It's good. It's foolish.
Thank you. Now we will hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We will begin with our first caller.
So at the November 15, 2022 Board of Supervisors' Meeting, Deputy Gonzalez, badge 0283, chose to use excessive force on a citizen, Audra Morgan, after removing her from the chambers. Silence from the board, the sheriff, and all government agencies goes beyond bad optic. It goes beyond cover-up. It is corruption. It is cruelty. And the non-response makes a mockery of all the supposed, quote, "good works" this board professes to be doing. Having Gonzalez on-site and then adding more sheriff presence when Audra is speaking, it only adds to the rottenness. While you may want to sweep it under the rug, the truth will ultimately arise, as it always does, and accountability will indeed be coming. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, and congratulations to Chair Vargas and Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. My name is Suzanne Hume. I'm the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. With all of this rain, does it cause you to wonder just how much plastic is entering our storm drains and our oceans, including our water and harming our people and wildlife? Little blades of plastic grass, synthetic turf, it's plastic pollution. Microplastics are a major health problem, harming health, damaging lung and liver cells, et cetera. Synthetic turf is plastic. Plastic emits methane. Methane is a powerful DHT greenhouse gas. Used artificial turf is expected to produce between 1 and 4 millions of tons of plastic waste in the next 10 years, leaking toxic chemicals into our water and our environment. As synthetic turf fields are usually placed, replaced every seven to 10 years, this produces a massive amount of plastic pollution. We need to think about and make really important choices. Instead of having our kids play on toxic synthetic turf, because the plastic grains, blades of grass, plastic, as many people are aware, contains lead, right? Most of the time. And when lead is exposed to sunlight and detergents, it breaks that bond, and lead dust is emitted. That is very unsafe for our kids. There is no safe level of lead. Also, many other things such as PFAS and salates, also if it's rubber crumb in that synthetic turf, old tires, why would we have our kids playing on old tires? Anyhow, it's very important that the County Board of Supervisors recognizes that we should not be installing any synthetic turf fields at all. You can do grass fields for much cheaper, and people know just how to do this. We need help in doing that.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
This is Catherine Rhodes. I'm requesting my issue be referred to the CAO and County Homeless Solutions Staff. And what I'm asking for is a legal opinion from our State Attorney General Banta if homeless emergency shelter declaration crisis allows for emergency shelters anywhere, public or private, included on dedicated parklands of Mission Bay, Fiesta Island, South Shore parking lots, Unrunner parking lots, without sequester or public hearings. Our State Attorney General Banta gave you the same type of legal advice when he ruled that the county could put homeless in the hotel rooms anywhere. The county can also put homeless anywhere in the city of San Diego and opening emergency shelters without Gloria's blockage, which he will always try to do. So also, we need a stated legal opinion if state law allows for homeless to stay at shelters longer than 60 days or six months, there is no other place to go. And also, you know, there's that 562 million in the ARPA funds, and what I would like for you guys to do is open shelters on Fiesta Island. I would like you to pay for the repurposing of the old E Street Library for the city of San Diego, get rid of all that asbestos, and there's money here for the homeless. Please get rid of all the roadblocks. You know, our main roadblock for everything for the homeless in San Diego is literally the mayor. Please do something to, to get rid of his, his opinion that it's illegal to take care of the homeless, and there's some types of things he can't do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Diane Grace, a concerned parent and grandparent. I shared with you yesterday San Diego City Attorney Mara Elliott's article regarding the social host ordinance, which all cities in unincorporated areas of San Diego County have enacted. A social host is anyone who knowingly hosts parties where minors are provided alcohol or marijuana on property that adults own, lease, or otherwise control. A violator of the social host ordinance may be cited or arrested, fined up to $1,000 or more dollars, serve up to six months in jail, and billed for law enforcement services. On the San Diego County Sheriff's website, they raise awareness of this critical issue of underage drinking, marijuana use, and important facts, including: two out of three teens said it is very easy to get alcohol; one in three said it is very easy to get it is very easy to get alcohol; one in three said it is very easy to get alcohol from their own consenting parents; two out of five said it is very easy to get alcohol from a friend's parent; one in four said they attended a party where youth under twenty-one were drinking in front of parents; and many teens believe that marijuana is safer than alcohol or other drugs. The sheriff's website also quotes the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, who states that regular use of marijuana can lead to significant problems, including cannabis use disorder. Please think of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
My name is John Bodorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. We ask the county to take action to stop the sale, use, and storage of lead aviation fuel. Lead is a toxic heavy metal with no safe level. It is a cumulative poison that does not break down the environment and is especially toxic to children and unborn babies. It damages their brains and nervous systems, lowers IQ scores, harms muscle coordination, speech, language, and causes behavior problems. There is lead in aviation fuel. According to EPA data, general aircraft Gillespie field dumps over eleven hundred pounds of lead into the air every year. Palomar Airport over seven hundred pounds, and Ramona over six hundred pounds. That is over twenty-four hundred pounds of lead in our air every year from county airports, and there is no safe level of lead. Studies show lead hurts kids' brains, leading to lower reading and math test scores and higher rates of suspension and detention, high school dropout rates, and crime and time spent in prison. Kids in Flint, Michigan saw a thirty percent drop in reading proficiency because of lead. A study done by the County of Santa Clara found children living within one-half mile of their airport had lead levels nearly twice that of kids at Flint. Santa Clara has stopped leaded fuel at their airport, as has cities of Long Beach, Santa Monica, and Van Nuys Airport in Los Angeles. Please take action and get the lead out of county airports. The county must notify those living and working near the airports that are being poisoned by lead and update the county and, and Los Angeles and counties, they update the county Health Department website to show airport, show airports as a source of lead. And by the way, Long Beach is working on it. They've not actually stopped it. I apologize. Please protect our kids and immediately stop the sale, use, and storage of leaded fuel. More information on the dangers of lead, please go to our Team Five Get the Lead Out page on our website. Thank you from CleanEarthForKids.org, and also stop using pesticides at your county parks. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the remaining callers that requested to speak on a matter not listed on the agenda, if you could please hang up and call back at the conclusion of the session. Chair Vargas, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes statement of proceedings for the regular board meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Unless there are any member comments or questions on the minutes, is there a motion to approve?
No move. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Can you go ahead and, oh, can we vote? Okay. Go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Vargas. That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Thank you. We don't have any items for consent calendar. The next item we are going to move forward on is for discussion items is for the purpose of the order of items today, we're going to be considering discussion item number first, number four first, and then going through the remaining items in numerical order. Item number four is supporting the same restrictions on homeschool sites as public or private schools when placing sexually violent predators. I want to thank both Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Anderson for introducing this item. And would you like to make some introductory comments?
Absolutely, Chair. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Supervisor Anderson for partnering with me on this board letter. I know it's an issue that affects, you know, Supervisor Anderson and all of our districts here in the county, and we're all doing what we can to protect our communities. Over a year ago, the board voted unanimously to oppose any placements of sexually violent predators in San Diego County, so I thank you for that. Currently, sexually violent predators are not allowed to be placed near public or private schools, and apparently they can be placed near home schools. I believe home schools should be treated the exact same as other schools and not be forced to have a sexually violent predator living nearby. This is incredibly important, especially with the pending placement and the decision of the Douglas Badger sexually violent predator into Borrego Springs. Terry Kelmeyer lives right across the street from this proposed placement. Terry has three kids, including two who are deaf, and homeschooled across the street from this potential placement. So there has been a good update since we submitted the board letter. The Court of Appeals actually reached a favorable decision, two to one, in favor of treating home schools the same as public and private schools when it comes to placements for sexually violent predators. So it was a two-to-one decision. That's a good news, but the dissenting opinion was strong, and we want to advocate for this change through the state legislature as well. We want to make sure that hopefully, if there is appeal, that the state legislator can act and put it into the legislation, that home schools would be treated the same way as private schools and public schools when it comes to placing sexually violent predators. I'd appreciate my colleagues' support on this item, and we continue the fight against sexually violent predators in San Diego County. So I'll make a motion to move to approve Supervisor Anderson.
I'd like to go ahead and, first of all, Supervisor Desmond, this is an outstanding bill. So many homeschoolers don't have the choice. Many of the rural communities don't have the same education choices as inner-city schools and, and many children have special needs, and these schools give them the opportunity. And they should have the same right to world-class education as any other child. So I happily second this, and thank you for inviting me on to the board letter. It's outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Vargas. We have nineteen total requests to speak, four individuals in person, and fifteen to, fifteen requesting to speak by phone. Also, I'd like to note for the record, we did receive four ecomments on this item. All four were in favor. Any members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers as your name is called. If you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals: Sarah Rogers, Lee Rogers, Mark, and Audra. You will have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please begin by stating your name for the record.
I'm Sarah Rogers. I'm a retired clinical and industrial organizational psychologist and a retired commander from the United States Navy. I appreciate the support that the board has provided us in the past dealing with sexually violent predators, and I'm here today as representative of the Borrego Springs SVP Task Force. So I want to tell you a few facts about SVPs. There are about seven hundred in the state of California right now, only one of whom is female. The rest are males. Ninety-five percent of these individuals have a history of molesting children. Fewer than forty percent of them choose to participate in clinical treatment, and they are all diagnosed with a mental disorder that makes them incredibly likely to reoffend. All of these SVPs who are designated such have reoffended multiple times. Most of them have a history that dates back to nineteen fifty-nine, sixties, seventies. So you want to be aware, this is not something that happened recently, or it's a fluke. So of those who have been selected for participation in the conditional release program in California, there were approximately fifty-two, there may be fifty-three now. We don't know if another one has been selected. Fifty percent have failed the program, then returned to custody. There are nineteen to twenty out right now. And what we want to talk about now is approving the two recommendations that are before you. Parents need to have the flexibility to choose when their children are schooled at home. We want to make sure that there is no discrimination against these parents because they choose to call their, their home school a, an education facility, whether or not it's registered with the state of California. There's only a one-week opportunity to register every year, and so sometimes...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll hear from the next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Lee Rogers. I have a home in Supervisor Fletcher's district, Semper Five. The issue submitted to you today by Supervisors Anderson and Desmond is, it's a county-wide issue, it's a clearance of simple issue. This is the, this is equity and safety for children wherever they attend school. All children deserve to be educated in a safe environment. There should be equity between classes of children. All parents deserve the right to decide what's best for their children. And in certain cases, what's best for their children is having them in the home environment. Commencing this month, every county in California has greater latitude and responsibility regarding the placement of sexually violent predators. Counties are setting up committees and procedures for their county. This is a great step. Part of those responsibilities and procedures must include specific language that states every school environment, public, private, or a home school deserves the same rights provided in-state law. This is one of the steps we must take. I've used the term "home school" a few times because that's the term that most people use. When you go to the California Department of Education, they don't use home school. Public schools, private schools. If you have a home school, that's considered a private school by the Department of Education. Despite that clarity, in the, in the Department of Education rules, certain judges and certain state agencies want to say, no, that's a little too hard for me to do my job if I include home schools in there. That's ludicrous. Within San Diego County, we must ensure clarity so we can provide a safe school environment for every child. Let's ensure equity for children who are educated in a home environment. You have another topic on improving equity today. Let's vote yes on this one. Thank you.
Well, on every single agenda item, it's worth mentioning that everyone should see the first minute and a half of this video because one of the people, you think it's funny, Nathan? One of the people voting...
Sir, can you please stay on topic?
This is on topic. You don't think it's on topic that a member of the World Economic Forum, that a group of global corporations, do you think they have our interests at heart? Nora, is that what you're saying?
So the item before you, sir, is supporting the same restrictions on homeschool sites as public or private schools when placing sexually violent predators. Would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
So it's obviously so obvious that sexually violent predators should not be allowed near home schools, and that you even have to clarify that is just amazing. It should have been instantaneous. There's no one who would deny that. Furthermore, of course, since you guys, just this last year, I believe, passed an ordinance so that the violent predator could just claim that he's a female and be in the women's bathroom, it's really a pretty moot point, but it's still worth doing. And of course, you're not going to see so many assaults so much as just missing people because anybody with half a brain could figure out, just like a game of chess, thinking of what your opponent would do, that they're going to get together in teams and one's gonna, this took me ten seconds. So imagine what somebody that's a sexually violent predator with his buddy sitting around for hours and hours a day could think of. They're just gonna sit with one of them at a car over by the bathroom in PB or somewhere, and the other one's gonna go in the bathroom, he's gonna be waiting in the bathroom, and get a text message saying, little girl's coming in now, no one else is around. They're gonna disappear. You're gonna see more missing people.
Using the name Audra, it is actually on topic, Nora, because the World Economic Forum condones pedophilia. And as we're talking about sexually violent predators, that is very on topic and something that should concern you. And yeah, that's nice that you want to keep them, why don't we keep them away from all people? They're habitual offenders that continue to do it, and we just put them in society, and it's like, what about just children at their homes? Why do they have to be in a school? Why don't these people go and you have some piece of property that you guys own and put them there? Because it seems like they're getting more help than the homeless. And as a victim, it's like, what the fuck is going on? He should be removed. Because you know what? Like, what the World Economic Forum thinks about pedophilia, that the guy that did it to me because he was only ten years older, it would be like, oh, no, that's just love. That's just, he just loves her. So for ten years, I went through that, and it's like, I don't understand. You should be putting them completely somewhere else. They shouldn't even be out. They should be always on the sex offender registry, which that seems to be going away too. And then you're like letting people out, just, you know, it's not a bad offense. It's only ten years. It's just child love, right? Just child love. Good to know that you don't protect anybody.
We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Hi, this is Mark Wilcox. I'm here today to express my support for the board's support of the direction of the chief administrative offices by the, the proposal made by Desmond and Anderson opposing inappropriate placement of sexually violent predators in San Diego County. This bill lacks in clarity the language pertaining to placement near schools, which includes home schools, and we believe that the decision should be made by the lawmakers. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Hello, this is Kelly McCormick, and I'm speaking in support of this measure for the safety and protection of home school children. There should be a restriction on the placement of sexually violent predators near home schools, just as there is in schools. So please approve this measure. Sexually violent predators should not be placed near home school children either. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
My name's Alan. Can you hear me okay?
You can hear you.
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, another approach which nobody talks about, which is very important, why does the worst of the worst criminals get a free home funded by the taxpayer?
Sir, can you please state your name through the audio record?
I, I, I did say that at the beginning. Sir, if you take my time back, my name's Alan. If I need five seconds back, let me start over. Basically, the homes are rented at a higher value than the current market value. So I want to know why the worst of the worst criminals get a free home funded by the taxpayer? That's where we need to approach it. And as far as home school, I know there's three on the board that do not like home school. Please, please look at the bigger picture. No child should be unsafe, not only the schools, but every neighborhood. I dropped my child off at my grandmother's house because the best childcare you have is your own family. That child's alone with that grandmother and is playing in the front yard, deserves as much protection as a home school, public school, private school. And as far as Liberty Health, they need defunded now. Will all members of this board step up, protect their children? Chair Vargas, you have children, a couple other folks here have children too. Think about your own child. Any predator, they get this home because it has to be monitored? If it has to be monitored, they need to be at Donovan Prison on a trailer where they can be monitored. What you're doing, if you're allowing, because you go, because you're against home school, no, no, the bigger picture is you need to protect every child, every neighborhood, every home. So this, this, I absolutely agree with this, but let's take it further. Let's protect every neighborhood. Put these bastards on Donovan Prison in the, in the trailers where they belong, where they can be monitored properly. Thank you very much, board, please. My passion for this is so huge, but it's for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, board. This is Kathleen Lippett, and as along, and also congratulations to Chair Vargas on her newly nominated position. her newly nominated position. I'm a longtime supporter of raising the capacity of parents to raise their children in communities that are safe and free, not only from drugs like marijuana, but also from sexual predation, from SVPs. With over half of SVPs failing to comply with the restrictions on their conditional release, this is a common sense request for legislative clarification and support from Supervisors Desmond and Anderson. And a unanimous vote would show your concern, equal concern, for protecting the most vulnerable among us, our children. So, please, support this item, and thank you again to Supervisors Desmond and Anderson for putting it forward.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Chair Vargas and Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a parent and a youth group mentor. I come to speak to this item as I find it extremely important to protect our most vulnerable, our children and youth. Thank you Supervisor Anderson for bringing this item forward, and I urge the Supervisors to vote in support. Any school providing instruction to a child or children should undoubtedly be considered a school. It was only a couple of years ago when all students in the county were required to homeschool. Families across the county, from the urban areas to the unincorporated areas, were forced to homeschool. Although public schools are now open, many families have recognized that homeschooling is a more efficient way to educate their children. Families have created education pods with other neighboring families where small groups of children come together to engage academically, socially, and physically. Many children who are homeschooled have special needs or developmental disabilities, and a home-based school is the only feasible option. It's imperative that we keep these home-based schools a safe place for young children to be. All children are vulnerable and should be afforded the opportunity to live in a safe community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning. This is Peggy Walker, and I speak in a supportive dischange. Thank you so much Supervisors Desmond and Anderson for caring enough about our young children to bring forth this measure. Homeschooling sites are the same as private school sites and deserve to be treated with equal respect. All children deserve equal protection and the opportunity to live and be schooled in safe communities. We heard from experts earlier that SVPs are likely to offend again and 50% fail the program. This alone should be enough to convince full board approval for this change. Please vote in support. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Hi, my name is Perry Kelmeyer. I am a resident of Borrego Springs. I am here in support of Supervisor Desmond and Anderson's proposal, and I am educating my children in my home, and I am directly across the street from the proposed placement of Douglas Badger. So, I am personally living this nightmare right now, and I have been living this nightmare for the last six months since the announcement of the proposed placement. I'm here to represent parents, other educators, that have chosen to educate their child in their home. There are many reasons that this, parents choose to homeschool. Personal choice, religion, special needs, which is my situation, bullying, anxiety. There are some parents that do not have a choice, and we need to make sure that their environment is safe where they're being educated. I want to express how devastating and the enormous negative impact this has, the placement or proposed placement of a sexually violent predator near where a child is being educated. Fear is real, and when it happens, where you're living, where you're being educated, it's 24/7. These children cannot sleep. They are worried they will be attacked at night. They can't focus on their education during the day. We all know these SVPs have been diagnosed as likely to be reoffended. So, I have had to have conversations with my children that they will have to be on guard 24/7. When they go outside for PE, to jump on the trampoline, to play basketball, I've had to tell them, they need to be watch out and be careful. They may be raped. They may be attacked. I've had to have conversations that you should never have to have with young children. I'm here to say a school is a school is a school. We are educating and raising our children to be productive members of society. My children should not be experiment--
Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
Hi, Paul Henken here. I find it interesting, that is a matter of concern, that only District 2 and 5 Supervisors sign the board letter. I agree that placing sexually violent predators in homes near any school's public, private, or homeschools should not be allowed. A student, a school is a school. Let's not discriminate. Any child is at risk, no matter what school here she goes to. I question whether SVPs should be placed in cities or high-density population areas at all. A study on released SVPs in California found a 6.5% recidivism rate after five years. Also 10.5% in New Jersey, 3.2% in Texas. The study is laiving, zooming, assessing the real risk of SVPs. I do not think this is an acceptable risk, especially considering the number of SVPs already in the county. I have also read that this is a mental disorder which cannot be cured. It can be mitigated, but of course, only if the SVP remembers to take his or hers medicines. Moreover, the distance from an SVP to a school should be way more than a quarter mile. I used to walk that distance several times a day when I was in my 40s and needed something or forgot a recipe ingredient or something from the stores or the grocery. The distance should be at least a mile, something to make them pause and think twice.
Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
Barbara Gordon. As a mother and grandmother, I'm here today to strongly support Supervisor Desmond Anderson's recommendation to support legislation that restricts the placement of any sexual violent predator near public, private school, including homeschool sites, and oppose any proposed court order placement of a sexual violent predator near, again, the public, private schools, including homeschools. Our children are the source of joy and happiness. They are our greatest treasure, and it is our responsibility to care and protect them. Now more than ever, we have a duty as parents to safeguard our children from the various threats that exist in our world. Our laws need to protect our children who are the most vulnerable. Parents need to feel that their children are safe in their own home and neighborhood. Again, I urge the board to support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
It's Truth. Hey, Dorian, for your idea of 3D-printed tiny homes on Fiesta Island, why not send all the sexually violent predators there instead? Let them have fun with each other instead of with children. But here in this item, we have Joel and Jim pretending to play the role of the good guys. But who are you guys kidding? Jim, you don't care about justice for adults assaulted at these meetings, and Joel doesn't even listen to any sleepers. Do you really think that anyone believes that either of you, or Nora, Nathan, or Tara genuinely care about children? Yeah, right. Especially not when you've all pushed the toxic COVID shot that has resulted in countless deaths of children, such as Simone Scott, who required a heart transplant after her shot and died. Or when you vote items through about abortion. Or when you all voted to let unaccompanied children ride public transit. You supervisors are as fake, transparent, and even as greasy as a Simpsons crusty burger fish sandwich. Rub it on the window, and you can see right through it.
I don't know. Fish sandwich. Are you sure?
The reality is that you supervisors could simply choose to not place sexually violent predators near children. Why are you asking, like you require the state to give you a veto authority, when you, as county officials, already have the authority to reject unjust and unlawful state tyrannical dictations at any time? If you have no power, then why are you all here? Why don't all you supervisors step down and let those of us with real cojones actually represent the county? And Nora, you've already spelled me as the chair. You don't really care about BIPOC, whatever BIPOCs are. I'm an American. You better make sure my polls don't get cut anymore like yesterday, because I'll go for the metaphorical throat on every single item the same way you've gone for my poll. And every single time you do it, I will call you out, sue you out, and pay you out. No to this item because you guys are fake. You don't care about children. You don't even--
Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Anne Riddle here. I come as a mother and a grandmother to share with you both my professional experience, as well as my personal experience regarding the item we're addressing today, and that's placing violent sexually, sexual predators near places where children are living. When I worked in social work, one of the things that came very clear to me very fast was the damage that is done to children by predators and how permanent it is, no matter how much we try to help them. And the idea that we would continue this by putting a predator back near where children is, is painful to even think about. Personally, what I watched during COVID is my own adult children educating their children in their home. What a wonderful job they did, and that this homeschooling is schooling, clearly was and still is clearly schooling, and that should be recognized as such. And what's been put forward by Desmond and Anderson would clarify that. I also am very much taken with the comments made earlier regarding the ability to make this equitable across the whole county, this definition of homeschooling as schools. I recognize that you're responsible only for the land use of the unincorporated area, but I would love to see the recommendation that this definition of homeschooling be included in what schooling really is across the county, in whatever way that you can do it, because our children need to be protected in their homes, particularly when so many of them are receiving their schooling there now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Ditto to everything that Paul said, everything that Truth said, everything that Barbara Gordon said, everything that all the callers have said so far. The fact that this is on, even needs to be voted on, is disgusting. It's so sad. You guys don't give two flying fucks about our children. Let's just be real. The fact that you, everything you do is to harm them. They don't have to ride the trolley with a parent. They are having to cover their mouths up at school. Well, not anymore, but, I mean, everything that you've done in the past, it just goes to show that you guys don't care. And when the people will wake up and rise together, I don't know when that will happen, but the fact is that, you know what? I just want to tell everybody, don't get rid of your guns. Do not get rid of your guns.
Can you please state your name for the audio record?
My name is Consuelo.
And Chair Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all the speakers that joined us today and talked about this topic. And particularly, I just want to say, Audra, thank you for sharing your story. I'm really sorry that you experienced that as a child. I really do believe that one of our primary roles as a society is to make sure that our children are kept healthy and safe. So, thank you for sharing your story today. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments from board members?
Just quick, I appreciate you both bringing this forward. I know we've worked together on a lot of issues related sexually violent predators, and I think this is an action, an appropriate step. As a parent, you just want your kids to be safe, and you want them to be safe from whatever dangers are out there. So, I'm pleased to support this and appreciate both of your work.
And thank you, Chair, for moving this item up. I appreciate that. And to some of the callers, it's not the county that places these people. It's the state that places people here, and then we have to deal with them and then try to, you know, take these types of actions to restrict and make sure the kids or people are safe as possibly can. It's not us that are actually placing these people here. So, we're at the receiving end of this. And so, I just want to say thank you very much for the, to all the speakers and my colleagues in advance.
You're welcome. So, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Anderson. Please vote.
Chair Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go back to item number one, Notice Public Hearing Approval of Open Spaces, Open Space Drainage Eastman Vacation, Vacation for Bosel Oaks located in the Bosel community. Is there a public comment?
Thank you, Chair Vargas. We have seven total requests to speak, three individuals in person, and four requests to speak by phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. For any members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals and tell that it's your turn to speak. And I'd like to invite forward the following individuals. David, Audra, and Mark. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. David Pallinger with Bonzel Oaks. This item before you allows us to reconfigure our open space in performance with our Conservation subdivision map. It actually adds about 30 acres of open space habitat to the project. So, I'm here, if you have any questions or any issues, ask your support of this item. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Using name Audra. Thank you, Nora. I appreciate that, but I also wish that you would acknowledge what happened out in that hallway, because it's like being a child again and them telling you they're not gonna do anything to the person that sexually assaulted you for years. It's crazy, anyway. So, I hope that comes from you too, because it's crazy that you can do one and not the other, and almost like, doesn't matter at that point. So, these projects, it's like, I mean, it's been going on for 34 years. What is going on? I don't understand. Seems, and we've talked about this many times, but I mean, since 1989, this project has been in play, and it's like, no homes have been built, still at the first phase. This property's been sold off, right? Because someone couldn't complete the project or whatever. But all the roadblocks you put up, it's like, is this ever gonna get completed, or there are going to be more permits and things they need to get in order to be able to build these homes? So, it's gonna be like another 34 years before anything, any homes get built. I just don't see how, it doesn't seem weird to you guys when like, stuff like this goes on? Like, you're like, we need to build housing. Let's place sexually violent predators in a home. Screw the homeless. I mean, it just seems so weird that more people don't see it, and that you think this is actually gonna get completed. I don't know. I mean, but why would you guys really want to create housing? It's like, because if you did, you wouldn't have all these roadblocks to, like, have to go through in order to build. You would be like, we care about people. Let's just get them a home. Instead, it's like, we gotta worry about the environment. Screw the people. The environment's being affected by this.
Mark, when you look at the sustainability impact statement on this agenda item, it says the proposed action to summarily vacate the public service easement and open space vacation contribute to the County of San Diego's sustainable goal. It's really important to realize what this is. This sustainability is, they keep changing the name. Originally, it was Agenda 21. That's not a made up conspiracy theory. It's the UN, the United Nations Agenda for the 21st century. Then they called it 2030. Now it's the Green New Deal Sustainability. It's an excuse to screw you. Government doesn't screw you by telling you they're going to screw you over. They always say they're doing something to help you, but you can see your freedoms being taken away and things getting worse. And when Audra yesterday mentioned 15-minute cities in the UK, I didn't even know what she was talking about, but I looked it up and sure enough, they're, they're already doing Agenda 21 things here and they've got it planned for a city in Utah already where people will have to get permits to use certain roads. And they're just trying to make these little compact cities, kind of like Hunger Games, where you're just trapped in your little area and you can't really leave. And eventually, if no one has individual cars, um, they can't really go do any type of protest far away at all. They can't cause much trouble at all. And really, if you wanted totalitarian government or a corporate oligarchy, which this is, it, nothing's better than having a bunch of people that can't travel far from their home individually and can have their rail system shut off when the AI robot says, all these people and their communications want to meet here today for a protest. And if they're not well armed with a 10-round clip, the sheriff here knows he doesn't want his family to be guarded with a 10-round clip and a little pistol.
Thank you. Now we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Hi, Paul Henken here. Thank you, Nora, for, um, your remarks on Audra. It's a welcome change from last session. Now you want to vacate 243 acres with established wildlife and substitute 277 acres of a public service easement? Does it sound like a deal? Well, it's next door highway, so the animals will have more access to getting run over. Does the established wildlife move? Will there be streets, signs for them? Maybe a food trail? How will a protected coastal sage get to the new biological open space? Project was approved in 1999 and the completion date has already been extended four times to 2014, 2016, 2021, and 2022. Land ownership has changed too. Permits have been obtained, but apparently nothing has been built. I wonder if the construction company wants to and is able to complete the project and add streets, sewers, drainage, and water facilities? Or do the potential buyers just have to wait until year increments for the permit process to play out? If the contractor cannot fulfill a contract on time, use a different one. You have the bonds and I see no reason not to switch. Actually, the whole thing sounds more like a deal made in hell. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Tru, I believe here we have the same item from November 16th, where the joint agreement for improvements was extended five different times. 165 single-family homes in Bonzel on Gopher Canyon Road. Is this the whack-a-mole of improvements? The final map was approved in 1999, but the property's vacant and not even at the first phase of the development. And we all know why. They only want ugly, sustainable slate gray, stack and packed, prison block housing projects that are $600,000 to $800,000 at a minimum and called affordable housing. The applicant obtained a permit from the US Fish and Wildlife Service. Why? What jurisdiction does the US Fish and Wildlife Service have on private land or county land? The equity statement says, quote, "PDS ensures that public improvements are constructed as part of new housing developments, such as roads and stormwater drainage systems," end quote. But can planning and development services handle these public improvements since on December 14th, you supervisors voted to keep PDS busy with marijuana permits, background checks, and safety inspections rather than the sheriff's department? The sustainability statement says California Green Building Standard Code requirements include electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Here's what Nathan said on May 27th, 2021.
As we transition more to electric vehicles significantly more, if everyone charges at home, we're going to have tremendous grid problems.
Are these stupid EVs people are charging in their stupid homes while we are all experiencing skyrocketing SDGNE bills? Nathan, you don't even have an electric vehicle. All you've got is a sustainable, scruffy beard.
Thank you. And Chair Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. I'm happy to make a motion to move this discussion item forward. So a second? Second, I have a motion myself and second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Chair Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is item number two, notice public hearing improving equity through changes to graffiti abatement regulatory ordinance. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brent Panas for Planning and Development Services.
Good morning, Chair Vargas and Board. I'm Brent Panas, Chief Departmental Operations with Planning and Development Services, also known as PDS. Today, we're proposing a new approach to graffiti removal on private property with the unincorporated county. Luge and PDS are committed to using data-driven approach to improve our programs. Over the last several years, we've looked at different data sets through an equity lens and found areas for potential improvement. Today, we bring before you an amendment to the regulatory code to authorize PDS to remove graffiti on private property with public funds and no cost to the property owner. This action will provide several benefits and result in a more equitable approach to the removal of graffiti on private property. County regulatory code makes it unlawful for an owner to allow graffiti to remain on their property. PDS's current role regarding graffiti abatement is to hold property owners accountable for the cleanup or removal. Not only are property owners the victims of vandalism, they're also required to remove the graffiti at their own expense. PDS staff investigates and resolves graffiti violations on a complaint basis. When we get a complaint, we work with the property owner to educate them on the ordinance and the responsibility to remove the graffiti. If compliance is not met, staff will give a reasonable time extension before using monetary penalties or removing the graffiti at the property owner's expense. The regulatory code does not take into account that the property owner is the victim of the vandalism and therefore removal by the county is the last resort. The costs associated with the removal can increase beyond the contractor's cost. The regulatory code currently requires recovery of the contractors and administrative costs, including county staff time to coordinate the removal, a cost hearing fee, and any preparation time associated with hearings and appeals. To avoid passing these financial burdens onto the property owner, we work with them to resolve these issues and in most cases do not need to issue citations or perform abatements. It still comes at a cost to the property owner to cover up the graffiti, a cost to the county of staff time to seek compliance, and often means that graffiti is lingering for several weeks when it could be removed within days by using a contracted contractor at the start of the compliance process. We recently conducted a community needs assessment in which we took data on five years' worth of co-compliance graffiti cases and distinguished between cases in underserved communities and other census tracts within the unincorporated county. What you see here is a map on which the blue-lined background indicates underserved communities and blue dots indicate graffiti cases in those communities. Red dots are graffiti cases that are not in underserved communities. When we zoom in, we get a better look at the majority of cases. Underserved communities were identified using a combination of Healthy Places Index, Cal Environmental Screen, San Diego Live Well HC3 communities, and 17 census tracts identified as environmental justice communities in the San Diego, in the County of San Diego Environmental Justice General Plan element. As you can see, underserved communities were much more impacted by graffiti. We found that graffiti cases have much higher occurrence within underserved communities. In the unincorporated areas of the county, 85% of graffiti cases are in underserved communities while 63% of the population resides in underserved communities. If you live within an underserved community, you are three times more likely to be a victim of graffiti. Based on the impact to underserved communities and because the current compliance process does not consider the victim of the graffiti, we identified a solution to provide a more equitable process to remove graffiti on private property. Rather than PDS opening code cases that require private property owners to remove the graffiti, a process that typically takes 46 days worth of site visits, back and forth communication, and costs the property owner hundreds of dollars, PDS would utilize a contractor to remove the graffiti at no cost to the owner. This would require the property owner's consent, but would reduce the cost and burden to the property owner as a victim of graffiti. Additionally, it would reduce overall county costs by reducing the amount of staff time spent managing graffiti code cases. In addition to saving property owners' time and money, we believe that this program can help increase the quality of life in our communities while protecting property values and protecting local businesses from loss of revenue. To accomplish this, we need to update the regulatory code to allow PDS to use public funds to remove graffiti from private property without seeking to recover our cost. PDS would use funds identified in our budget process for abatements and will explore opportunities for alternative funding from other sources such as grants. We conducted outreach to share our proposed solution with the community and to solicit their feedback. We created a project website, posted to social media accounts, posted flyers in nine threshold languages to all unincorporated county libraries and several county parks, and emailed 282 stakeholders, including community planning groups, design review boards, economic groups, and other community groups. Additionally, we also held five virtual public meetings about the proposed program and presented at several other meetings for community planning groups and local economic and labor union stakeholders. Feedback was positive and supportive of the program. To implement our proposed program, an update to the regulatory code is required. Our recommendation is to approve this amendment to allow the use of public funds to remove graffiti on private property at no cost to the owner and to waive Board Policy B29 for department responsibility for cost recovery. If this program is approved, we'll be sure to coordinate with each of your offices as we begin to implement this program. This concludes the presentation on this agenda item. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I want to thank the Planning and Development Services for proposing this graffiti removal program. I think it's going to result in a faster removal from private property in the unincorporated areas. And, um, one of the areas, Spring Valley is the most impacted community with, I think, about 60% of the graffiti, right? I think Chair Fletcher and I, um, represent that area. And so I think the burden for the property owners is one that, that is really creating problems for them. And so I'm, I'm really excited about this and it's going to really, I think, allow staff to, um, really respond quickly, which is what people want. And so I'm, I'm really excited about it and I'm happy to make a motion to support. Is there a second? Second? Any additional discussion?
And I'm sure this is obvious, but you're going to get permission from the owner first before, okay. I'm assuming that'll happen, but I just want to make sure that was asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Vargas. We have six total requests to speak on this item, two individuals in person, and four requesting to speak by phone. I'd also like to note for the record that we did receive e, uh, six ecomments on this item. All six were in favor. For any members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals, Audra and Mark. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please state, begin by stating your name for the record.
Mark, uh, if I understand this correctly, it doesn't sound like such a bad idea, except for one thing. Um, and let me make sure I do understand. So previously, uh, you tell property owners that they had graffiti and if they didn't get rid of it, uh, they might be fined or forced to get, well, the, the county would charge them to get rid of it. But now, uh, you want a program that will get rid of the graffiti without charging the homeowner, who is a victim, of course, of the graffiti. So if I understand that correctly, which of course, sounds like a good idea. Other than the fact that, as usual, with every other program that you've ever done, there, there will probably be many, many middlemen in line, uh, a manager or CEO of the program or whatever title you'd like to give him, where he just gets a phenomenal amount of money for determining that this property does need to be repainted or whatever. Whereas all you really need is an employee to go and do it and, you know, pay them a decent wage. But I have a strong feeling that that's not the way it'll go and it'll simply cost the county much more money than it needs to, which will go into the pocket of your crony buddies. That's my only fear. If I'm understanding this correctly, it does sound like a good idea that people who are victims of graffiti shouldn't have to pay or shouldn't be forced or coerced in any way or fined to, uh, take care of their property. So that's my concern. And if it's anything like everything else you've ever done, your corporation will make a lot of money, especially a very few people, and very little will get done, spending a lot of our taxpayer dollars.
I don't know, Jim wouldn't take my 10 cents the other one time. That was just crazy. It's like, it's a lot of money to just waste. I don't understand why we're giving people code violations for somebody graffitiing their house. Like that is super weird that you guys do that and then you're paying somebody seven staff hours to spend 46 days to take care of it. Number one, what if I like graffiti on my house? Does that not, is that not okay? So if I want it, you got to remove it. But then I'm thinking, once you paint that, you don't think they're going to go back and re-graffiti it? It's like, oh, that's a perfect, look at that. It's all fresh. I'm going to just redesign it. It's great. And then, you know, what I'm thinking too is, I mean, maybe I should graffiti my house because then you guys will paint it, right? Or my whole fence? Like if I do the whole fence, will you paint the whole thing? Do I get to pick the color? I'm just curious. I don't know. I think people should do that, like graffiti your house in the county. I mean, we're going to pay for it, but I mean, at least you can get a freshly painted house. Are you going to do that with vehicles as well? Or just? Like if I graffitied my vehicle, would you paint my car? Just wondering, like, is that, is it weird? Is it weird to ask that? Is that weird to be doing this? Giving people code violations? Like, you guys have your hand in every pocket and like Mark was saying, it's like, yeah, what are you going to create this position that somebody's going to like get paid hundreds of thousands of dollars? You know? I mean, I'll take that job. Are you guys hiring? Can I? Where do I fill out the application? I'm just curious. Sarah? With you? No? Good. I suggest everybody graffiti their house so that it gets painted by the county.
Now we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with- before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
It is not right, and it's probably illegal too, to charge the property owner with removing graffiti that he or she did himself, not caused or perhaps even noticed. Similarly, if the property owner indeed does put up the graffiti, if in fact, it is truly graffiti, he or she should pay for its removal, not us. We, taxpayers, should not bear the cost of removing it. The definition of graffiti is writing a drawing scribbled, scratched, or sprayed illicitly on a surface in a public place. The law changed that somehow to any unauthorized inscription or design that is written marked on any real or personal property. Not necessarily in a public place, that is. In other words, they propose to tell you if your art is graffiti. Whether or not something is art and not just writing or art of no redeeming value is a fairly subjective determination. Some things are obvious and some are not. But the one thing that's for sure is that this will be a lawyer's full employment act. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Joe, yesterday you finally put your phone down to sneeze. God bless you because your soul is in desperate need of it. Graffiti, one man's art is another man's garbage, or vice versa for communist-funded art pieces like One Make See Downtown, or even how many people would describe the quality of jobs you supervisors continue to do. Communist garbage. So for years, the items of the county code has made quotes, "A property owner responsible to clean or remove graffiti visible from a public or private road. Property owners incur the time and cost. If an owner does not clean it voluntarily, code enforcement actions may be taken, or the county may remove it, a process called 'public nuisance abatement.'" End quote. These supervisors have made disadvantaged, disenfranchised, and underserved people of the unincorporated area pay to clean up vandalism that someone committed upon their property. Talk about inequitable discrimination. But do these supervisors really care now? The item says, quote, "The county could remove graffiti on private properties in the unincorporated area at no cost to the property owner. It would be more fiscally prudent. Using a contractor would cost the county less money." End quote. No money cost, right, Joe? Not only that, the updated code says the director may choose to abate graffiti with the use of public funds. So maybe they won't choose to cover some graffiti. Seems like a legal loophole for potential discrimination. The cleanup cost will be between twenty thousand to forty thousand dollars a year. And speaking of cleanup, it's so great when Tara's gone. She's definitely a stain on American history and need a public nuisance abatement. I give full consent for public funds directed towards that.
And thank you. And Chair Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any additional comments from?
Yeah, real quick, Chair, thank you. I just also want to thank PDS staff for bringing this forward, you know, to have our, the victims having to pay for the crime. It didn't make a lot of sense and wasn't working very well, so I'm really glad to see the county stepping up and be willing to take care of these things and get it down. And I remember there used to be, maybe there still is, a graffiti depository or something where you'd take a picture of the graffiti and then it, so it goes into a, whatever, the files or whatever, and so that if we ever catch the person doing this graffiti, we've got past records as well of, if we can show that the artist did many of these things. So I really appreciate that effort. And I know there's a lot of people in Vista and Fallbrook also very interested in this effort. So thank you very much for bringing this forward. This is well done.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Can we vote, please?
And Chair Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present in voting aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number three, Notice Public Hearing, Campo Road Corridor Revitalization Specific Plan. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Lynch for Plan, from Planning and Development Services.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Vargas and supervisors. Today's staff is requesting that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Campo Road Corridor Revitalization Specific Plan. The purpose of a specific plan is to provide a unique vision with tailored goals and policies for a specific part of the Casa de Oro community, consistent with the general plan and the community plan for the area. Campo Road is an important-
I will make sure that next time I give you enough time to move in, I was like, hurry up, hurry up. I'm just kidding. So I apologize for that. So go ahead and settle down, settle in, and then you can go ahead and start. I apologize.
Campo Road is an important community hub in the Casa de Oro neighborhood. It has historically served as a center of economic and civic activity, providing businesses, schools, and other services for the Casa de Oro area, as well as nearby Villa de Oro and Spring Valley. Currently, Campo Road is a four-lane auto-oriented boulevard not welcoming to bicycle or pedestrian activity, and has zoning regulations that do not support the housing and safe commuting options that the community wants to see in the area. The specific plan has been developed with heavy collaboration with local residents, business owners, schools, and community-based organizations in the Casa de Oro area, and lays the groundwork for the revitalization of this corridor by providing more housing opportunities, supporting and attracting new and existing businesses, and improving multimodal access and safety for all users of Campo Road. The community envisions this area as a welcoming destination where both residents and visitors to the area can gather, meet with family and friends, and hold community events along a revitalized Main Street that is safe and equitable for all. The specific plan embodies this vision, along with many of the goals and opportunities that we've been discussing in other contexts. It creates opportunities for new housing in a VMT infill area, increases equity in an underserved area by creating a more safe, walkable, green, and beautiful community with increased economic development opportunities. This plan promotes smart growth principles and includes strategies, goals, and an implementation plan to achieve the desired, safe, walkable, Main Street-style character for the area. Adoption of this specific plan will position both local community organizations and the county to apply for and obtain grant funding to assist in the implementation of the plan. This morning, the team will present an overview of the vision, concepts, and components of the plan and associated implementation strategies for revitalization of the historically important corridor within Casa de Oro.
The specific plan area is located within the Casa de Oro Mount Helix neighborhoods within the Villa de Oro community planning area, which is located between the cities of La Mesa and El Cajon. Villa de Oro is shown here outlined in yellow. More closely, the specific plan is shown here in red centered on Campo Road between Rogers Road and Granada Avenue, parallel to State Route ninety-four to the south. The plan refers to this area as "the corridor," which encompasses the commercial and residential uses located one block north and south of Campo Road. Let's begin by going over the existing conditions in the area. The streetscape is not welcoming to pedestrian activity as both sides of the road are lined with expansive surface parking lots with little to no landscaping and limited shaded areas throughout the corridor. Campo Road currently has two travel lanes in both directions with a reversible turn lane in the middle. Both directions have a five-foot striped bike lane and six-foot attached sidewalk. In some areas, bus stop benches and/or fire hydrants are also located on the sidewalk. There are seventy individual driveways onto Campo Road in the specific plan area, or an average of one every fifty feet. The current speed limit on Campo Road is thirty-five miles per hour. In 2015, the Casa de Oro Alliance, who are a coalition of local residents, business, and property owners who work to enrich and beautify the Casa de Oro area, prepared a conceptual plan that identified a need for a vision to revitalize this area. After presenting their conceptual plan to the board in 2017, staff was directed to pursue potential funding opportunities, like grants, to pursue development of a specific plan for the area. Through working with the community and the alliance to continue efforts to support revitalization and beautification in Casa de Oro, staff applied for and was awarded the Smart Growth Incentive Program, or SGIP, grant from Sandag in 2018 to develop the specific plan for the area. The specific plan aligns with planning efforts at the state, regional, and county levels. State legislation, such as Senate Bill Thirty-Five, Senate Bill Six, and AB Twenty-Eleven, seek to expand affordable housing options within the state in certain eligible areas. All properties within the specific plan area qualify for these bills, which allows for streamlined review of housing developments within the corridor. The plan aligns with Sandag's 2021 Regional Plan, and the Smart Growth Incentive Program supports planning activities that facilitate compact, mixed-use, transit-oriented development, and increased housing and transportation choices in the region. The plan also supports county planning efforts, such as the Transportation Study Guide, Active Transportation Plan, and the Regional Decarbonization Framework. The corridor is located entirely within a VMT or vehicle mile traveled infill area. Infill areas are locations within the unincorporated area of the county that have higher densities and a greater mix of land uses. The future Casa de Oro Library and Park is also planned to be located just outside of the specific plan area, directly adjacent to Spring Valley Academy to the north. This facility will provide the area's residents and visitors an additional community space with pedestrian and bicycle facilities for people of all ages and abilities proposed to be able to safely access the site. There were two phases of public engagement that took place for the specific plan: the initial development of concepts and vision, and the drafting of the specific plan itself. The outreach strategy for both phases included multiple public workshops, stakeholder meetings, passing out flyers door-to-door, and surveys. Staff also attended public events within the community, such as the Casa de Oro Festival and Community Planning Group and Casa de Oro Alliance meetings, to obtain this valuable input. Staff continued public outreach throughout the COVID-19 pandemic and offered multiple online workshops via Zoom. Using this feedback, staff developed a draft of the specific plan and published it to the county's project website for public review in the fall of 2021. Notification of this public review was translated to the threshold languages distributed to nine thousand recipients via email, and over four thousand business and property owners and residents by mail. With the help of the Casa de Oro Alliance, flyers were also distributed to local businesses, residents, churches, and schools in the corridor, giving an opportunity for additional discussion of the specific plan to members of the community. In addition to providing presentations to the Villa de Oro CPG, Spring Valley CPG, and the Casa de Oro Alliance at their regularly scheduled meetings during the public review period, staff also hosted virtual workshops to gain more feedback from the community on the draft specific plan, and met with local schools and churches to discuss the details of the plan. The input received during these outreach efforts were grouped into two themes that informed the specific plan's vision for the corridor. The first main theme is to create a vibrant center of activity for the area. Strategies in the plan to achieve this include updating the zoning to allow for more housing options, allowing these new housing options to be co-located with other commercial uses already allowed in the area, and creating and connecting to welcoming and inclusive public spaces around the corridor. The second theme involves making these spaces more connected by introducing traffic calming strategies to maintain a smooth flow of traffic and improving facilities for pedestrians to walk, bicyclists to bike, and commuters to drive that result in a safe environment for everyone. Let's first go over a few specifics of the plan, starting with the input staff received on the building use and design strategies and how the plan was prepared in response to this feedback. During staff's outreach efforts, much of the feedback that was received regarding building use and design on Campo Road was the lack of a sense of place and the degradation of business activity over time, since businesses are all located far from the street and not noticed by visitors who drive through the area. These comments included the need for lower-floor retail with residential units above, creating a unique sense of place that has a walkable feel, including more affordable housing and housing options, and moving buildings closer to the street to increase business activity. Currently, a majority of the specific plan area is zone general commercial, or C-36, which primarily allows for commercial uses. In the general commercial zone, residential uses are only allowed when a certain amount of commercial use is provided. The current zoning standards do not support the type of development that addresses the feedback staff has received from the community. Existing zoning requires large front setbacks, shorter building heights, limiting the type of development that could provide more housing options, and the vision for a walkable Main Street. The adoption of the specific plan will replace the current zone designation with the specific plan's custom zoning, or S-88, tailored through community input, which allows for both multifamily residential and commercial uses, either standalone uses or as part of a mixed-use project. There are two distinct districts proposed in the plan, Main Street and Gateway. These districts will help achieve the look and the feel of the area that the community would like to have, shaping the corridor into a safer, more vibrant, walkable space. While both districts allow for the same land uses, development standards differ between the two to create unique spaces along the corridor. The Main Street District intends to produce an active street front with ground floor retail and residential uses above, locating off-street parking behind buildings to create a more inviting pedestrian environment, whereas the Gateway District are located at the common entrances to the commercial corridor, providing a distinct feeling of entering Casa de Oro using physical entry features, branded signage, and enhancing public spaces near these amenities to create unique sense of place within the area. These updated land uses, zones, and development standards will result in encouraging mixed-use projects that make visiting multiple businesses in one trip easier, allowing different types of buildings that can accommodate more housing options, and creating welcoming spaces for all residents and visitors of Casa de Oro to live, work, dine, and shop.
The next topic we'll cover involves the plan's proposed multimodal safety strategies. These safety strategies include the improvement of pedestrian and bicycle facilities, the introduction of roundabouts to Campo Road, and safer vehicular circulation through the corridor. Much of the feedback received by staff regarding Campo Road is for the safety not only of pedestrians, but also of cyclists and drivers. Comments staff received included adding more opportunities to be able to cross Campo Road, calming traffic and slowing speeds on Campo Road, including more sidewalks, adding roundabouts to cut down in speeding and for a better look, and improving the safety at intersections throughout the corridor. This is a Google Earth image of Campo Road, this time facing east towards the intersection of Granada Avenue. We can see the same features of Campo Road as were mentioned earlier, including the two-way middle lane, the five-foot painted bike lane, and the six-foot sidewalks. Using the input gained through community outreach, the specific plan proposes a reconfiguration of Campo Road, including reducing the number of travel lanes on Campo Road between Conrad Drive and Granada Avenue from four to two. This utilization of the outside travel lanes provides numerous benefits, such as improving safety by slowing down moving traffic, providing more space for Class IV protected bike lanes, on-street parking, landscaped areas, and wider sidewalks. To address community input related to potential impacts of the reduction from four to two lanes, a traffic study was conducted that indicated that two lanes are adequate to accommodate existing and proposed trips while maintaining travel time for vehicles from one end of the corridor to the other. The concept also proposes the extension of curb lines or bulbous at corners. These bumpouts shorten pedestrian crossing distances, add room for street trees, crossing beacons, landscaping, and bus stops, and help designate and protect on-street parking that buffers pedestrians from moving car traffic. These strategies will create safer conditions for all users of Campo Road, including students attending nearby schools. The protected bike lanes mentioned before are recommended by the county's Active Transportation Plan and are separated from the roadway by physical barriers to protect, to provide more comfort for cyclists of all ages and skill levels than a shared lane marked with sharrows. Protected bike lanes also provide opportunities for active recreation, create more inclusive and inviting corridor, and help reduce vehicle miles traveled by offering additional modes of transportation. The specific plan incorporates strategies to achieve multimodal safety while maintaining consistent traffic operations, including maintaining overall travel time throughout the corridor, including proposing four new roundabouts and two modified left-turn intersections. While conducting polls at multiple workshops, roundabouts were favored to improve safety at intersections in the corridor. There are several benefits to using roundabouts on Campo Road, including a smoother flow of traffic, which generates less greenhouse gas emissions than stop-and-go traffic, as well as reductions in conflicts, speed, and noise level, allowing for quick and easy U-turns to assess, access spaces or driveways on the opposite side of the street, facilitating safer left-turn movements, resulting in average vehicle speed reductions of between fifteen to twenty miles per hour, which can lower incidence of accidents, collisions, pedestrian injury, and fatalities. The Granada Avenue Roundabout, shown on this slide, is larger than the other roundabouts and creates space for a welcoming gateway feature at the eastern end of the specific plan area. At two locations along Campo Road, modified left-turn intersections are proposed that would allow left-turn lanes for east and westbound turning motions. These left-turn movements can be accomplished by standard signals or by yielding, and provide a maintained flow of traffic similar to roundabouts. Pedestrian crossings could also be created that would either use the traffic signal or pedestrian-activated flashing beacon to assist walking safely across the street. In order to move this plan from concept to reality, an implementation plan is included within the specific plan. Adoption of this specific plan puts residents, businesses, local community organizations, and the county in a better position to apply for and obtain grant funding for the improvements and studies identified in the plan. The implementation plan outlines potential timelines, tasks, roles and responsibilities, cost estimates, and potential funding sources to implement the public improvements and programs laid out in the plan. There are over 40 implementation tasks that include short, mid, and long-range actions measured in years that can be completed by stakeholder groups and/or the county, and involve collaborating with the community to pursue grant opportunities for implementation actions, working with a branding consultant to develop a slogan, logo, and marketing materials for businesses in the corridor, and completing preliminary engineering studies to inform final construction drawings. Implementation for the plan is already underway. Staff intends to continue outreach with local residents, schools, and over 120 businesses through a property and business survey. They will identify how the community would like to fund business improvements along the corridor. Funding has already been provided to PDS by the board through the District Two Neighborhood Reinvestment Program for this continuing effort. In 2022, PDS and DPW staff worked in partnership to submit five grant applications at the state, federal, and regional levels to pursue the implementation of the strategies, goals, and vision laid out in the specific plan. The most recent of these is the Higher Impact Transformative, or HIT, grant application through the California Department of Housing and Community Development. This grant funds projects that accelerate infill housing development, reduce vehicle miles traveled, increase housing supply across all affordability levels, and affirmatively further fair housing. Now we will discuss the recommendations provided by community planning groups, planning commission, and staff's recommendations for the specific plan. Staff met with the Valladolid CPG on September 13th of 2022 to provide an overview of the revisions included in the draft final plan. The Valladolid CPG voted unanimously in favor to recommend approval of the specific plan. The planning commission received a presentation on the specific plan on October 21st, 2022, and voted unanimously in favor to recommend approval of the specific plan, along with all other staff recommendations. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors find that the proposed specific plan complies with the California Environmental Quality Act and state and county SEQA guidelines, and that the Board adopt a resolution for the Campo Road Revitalization Specific Plan, adopt a resolution authorizing PDS to request funding through the Higher Impact Transformative, or HIT, application, and adopt an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties within the specific plan area to S88.
The specific plan provides a long-term, focused vision for the Campo Road corridor with the opportunity for implementation through important public-private partnerships and ongoing community engagement. This area is at the confluence of several Board policy directives to encourage development in VMT infill areas, to utilize existing transit, and incentivize investment in historically underserved community. The specific plan's policies will create transit-oriented, mixed-use developments that are safe to walk and bike while advancing the county's climate and sustainability goals of reducing VMT and lowering GHG emissions, making Casa de Oro a blueprint for future economic revitalization in the county. That concludes our presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Fletcher?
Yeah, thank you. This is a really exciting presentation. I want to give a lot of credit to everyone who's worked incredibly hard on it, and a special thank you to the members of this community who have seen a vision for what this area can be. And we know it's going to take a while for the changes to happen, for the market to respond to the zoning changes, for proposals to come forward, but there's going to come a day where this area in Campo Road is really going to be a destination, and it's going to be an incredible community and a wonderful thing, and it's going to be a tremendous testament to a group of citizens who cared a lot about their community. When this area was districted into my district almost a year ago, February, one of the first things I did is go out and spend a fair amount of time on Campo Road with the Casa de Oro Alliance, and we walked the length of that area. And when you walk it and you really see how fast the cars go, the lack of, really, any sidewalk, of any meaningful thing, the number of cutouts, the tremendous setback, you realize why they care so much about completely changing this. And so to go out and see it, and then see what they had envisioned and what they'd been working towards, and then to have it before us today as a board to vote on it, I think is a really significant step forward. It also, and you know, there's never anything everyone's going to be 100% on, I get that, and we've got plenty of time to work through kind of outstanding concerns, but to get to the level of support we have around reducing the number of lanes, right, which actually creates that sense of community, makes it easier for pedestrians and for bikes, but also doesn't slow down or impede the flow of traffic at all, to redesign it, to be able to move things in closer and taller, to provide mixed-use development, the commercial, the residential, and just the feel of what it will be like, I think is something that is going to really create a tremendous sense of community. And so I want to commend everyone who's a part of the Casa de Oro Alliance for your commitment, your work in getting us to this point. I know your former president, Bob Yarres, your current president, Lisa Stewart, and so many others have been so involved, and so we're going to hopefully pass this and adopt this today, and I'm fully committed to working whether we're trying to secure grant funding, whether the county needs to step up with funding, but make sure that we can make this vision that we're adopting today a reality in practice and expedite as much as possible. So thank you all very, very much, and a tremendous thank you to our county team for all of your work in getting us here today. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Have a motion? Supervisor Anderson?
Madam Chair, I grew up in this area. I got my first job on Campo Road. So when I got elected and this project was put forward, I had a lot of concerns, and I want to compliment my colleague, Nathan, you did an outstanding job, and you know, when you took over the district, it was yours to do as you please, and I'm glad that you did do the walk, you did put the time in, and the product's outstanding. One of my initial concerns, though, is I had lived there long enough to remember when they put a metering system on the freeway on-ramp, and it was absolute gridlock. Both lanes were backed up, backed up for a mile. You couldn't get in, you couldn't get out, you couldn't do anything. And so I was concerned that with two large schools, one of the largest schools in the Lames, at Spring Valley, and then Santa Sofia, that's located right there, that San Juan Road would then become the four-lane corridor and it'd be gridlocked. But I want to thank Sarah and her staff for going back, meeting with the principals, talking through, actually doing surveys. I am very confident and like to second it today that this is going to be an outstanding project. The only concern I had back in the day when it was my district, a short two years ago, was that the traffic generated by extracurricular activities from the schools, games, sports, would be a terrible impact on the community. But having that solved, you couldn't ask for a better, better project for the community. And one of the things that we did in the first year is I actually reached out to all the school districts, I reached out, we paid to have a survey, go out to the entire community to meet the needs, and this project will probably, next to Third Street in Chula Vista, will be the best project in San Diego County. So Nathan, thank you for your hard work, and thank you for the hard work of the community, because you're right, the alliance stepped up and worked awfully hard to make this happen.
Thank you, Supervisor. We're going to go turn it over to public comments at this time.
Thank you, Chair Vargas. We have 10 total requests to speak, four individuals in person, and six requesting to speak by phone, and I'd also like to note for the record, we did receive 52 ecomments on this item, 47 were in favor, two were in opposition, and one was neutral. Any members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers as your name is called. If you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I would like to invite forward the following individuals: Lisa Stewart, Robert Yarres, Audra, and Mark. You will have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please begin by stating your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Stewart, and I serve as the President of the Casa de Oro Alliance. The Alliance is a nonprofit organization that was formed for the purpose of bringing residents, business owners, landlords, and community members together to revitalize the Casa de Oro area of Spring Valley. Our vision is to create and maintain a historically rich, culturally diverse, thriving community that is attractive, safe, pedestrian-friendly, and a popular destination for dining, entertaining, and entertainment, and shopping. The Casa de Oro Alliance Board of Directors supports the specific plan and looks forward to working with the county staff on the implementation phase. Over the past five years, community members provided input about what they value in a community. We would like to thank the county staff for incorporating as much of that input into the specific plan as was possible, and for developing a plan that reflects the community's desire to be a drive-todestination rather than a drive-through-destination. Thank you, Supervisors, for your yes vote to approve the Campo Road Corridor Revitalization Specific Plan.
Mark, this is one of the most important things you guys will ever hear about. I couldn't describe it all in this length of time. You all need to see Rosa Corey's video. If you go on YouTube, look up Rosa Corey Part 1. Her video is much longer, she has incredible expertise, and we'll give her a resume and tell you why she knows this. But I'll give you a summary. One of the things wrong with this plan, despite the fact that it sounds like a nice thing, is that it's got subsidized housing, the low-income housing, which a long time ago, corporations paid people enough to buy or rent property, and now they're not, and that's why we have a problem. And instead of solving the problem, these corporate officers, who are not here to help you, are subsidizing these apartments with our tax dollars. This is very unsustainable, and Nathan, who is a member of the World Economic Forum, is a liar and is lying to you, to do their plan, which is to get us all in little stack-and-pack and areas. Now, the areas themselves, to have efficient areas isn't such a bad idea. What's wrong with it is, that's all it is. You're going to wind up like Europe, where you don't have the money to go anywhere, you can't afford electricity to be of any danger or change anything. They're doing a Delphi system where, they didn't ask you about this. This was the UN Agenda 21 people knew about over a decade ago, and were warning about on the internet, but you guys hadn't been seeing that. And you weren't asked. Sandeg is illegitimate. There are members here gyms on Sandeg, they give $100 million grants to Southern Californian cities, but they're required to implement the UN agendas. So you were never asked if you wanted to drive 20% less, or if you wanted to only have housing like this, and eventually be stuck in your little area with no decent weapons, with AI all around you and cameras. It's very...
Thank you. We'll hear from the next speaker. Next speaker? Audra or Robert Yarres?
Yarres, I am the president, current president emeritus of the Casa de Oro Alliance. I've been involved with this project since day one, when we submitted the Sandeg grant, and I'm proud to say, working with an incredible staff from the county, working on this project, we're here today to ask for your support. I've lived in this community for 44 years, I've seen the deterioration of Casa de Oro happen year after year, and I'm proud to say that in working with the Alliance, the community, the businesses that I've worked with closely, Nathan walking down the street with us many years ago, Joel's support today, that we're about to engage in the much overdue revitalization of a community that's been neglected for many, many years. In fact, many people talk about the tarnish to the Casa de Oro community or the House of Gold, and it's too bad. We've seen the development of Resto San Diego down the road at the expense of Casa de Oro. We have a vibrant, potential community serving many, many parts of East County. If you haven't seen the newly constructed pickleball, multimillion-dollar project on Campo Road, it's the beginning, beginning of something that's going to be really, really exciting to this region. So with that, I want to ask for your total support for this project and to help us restore the gold to Casa de Oro.
Use the name Audra. I think you need to rename it to 15 Minute Cities, right? Because that's what this is. This is what you guys are doing, that's what you're implementing. I'm not saying that you should not revitalize places, but what you're doing is something way greater than that. And the fact that people don't see it, I mean, you're sitting here like, Klaus, I mean, Nathan, I'm sorry, but you were saying that you're basically going to not take any more time to get through this, you're just, like, there's less lanes. You're making it harder for people to get somewhere. You're going slower, you're reducing the speed, but it's not going to take, like, everything you say doesn't make any sense, because six to 10 years from now, like, you guys don't even want us driving, so I'm wondering why you even have these parking spots there. I mean, because by the time you complete this, are we going to get rid of cars? Because you guys want us to walk and bike everywhere, right? Bless you. And, you know, I mean, I would suggest putting cricket farms in those spots, because, I mean, that's sustainable. We're going to be eating crickets one day, right? We're already drinking sewer water. We're not supposed to wash our clothes, it's not sustainable. I mean, this is a joke, because what you're doing is actually making people's lives harder. There's a difference between actually revitalizing something and totally changing the lifestyle of people, and making us go into these places where it's literally like, you're going to have everything within 15 minutes, so you don't have to go anywhere, then we're going to have to get a permit if we want to go outside of our zone. I'm just waiting for you guys to actually call it that, because it's coming here, it is here, that's what this is. I mean, nobody pays attention, and they think it's so great, it's like, but it isn't. It's actually terrifying to see this, and it's like, how are you going to water those trees? I thought we were in a drought. That's impossible to do, and we don't have any water, right? That's why we're giving people sewer water. It's great, it's great, love it. This is like the World Economic...
Now we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Hi, Paul Henken. The revitalization plan is severely flawed and a long presentation, sort of like that biz. We get equal time. In 2018, the Board provided thirty thou in one-time-only funding to conduct a survey of businesses and property owners in the Casa de Oro District to identify their interest level, informing Business Improvement District or Community Facilities District. Now, we hear the survey is anticipated to commence after adoption of plan, or is this typo? Five years later, the survey is too late, and apparently the money gathered dust and hopefully interest. The plan on page two, as four, proposes reducing building setbacks in order to build closer to the street. How medieval, no open sewers. The plan wants to reduce parking minimums, which would help get rid of cars, and reduce the number of visitors, by the way, from other cities who would be left without a place to park, where they can gather if they're willing to park and walk, hopefully not too far away. The plan would allow buildings up to five stories. I doubt that is what people expected when they moved to the suburbs. I imagine most people expected a place where they could rest away from the city crowds after a busy day. I see that they want to divide the... I see that they want to divide the specific plan area into two distinct districts, sort of like it's already divided. There's probably even some mixed-use stuff already there that the Board is always talking about. The Board wants changes to business center.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
Hi, can you hear me, Board?
We can hear you. Can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name's Alan. Yeah, I've been to Rome, Italy, and I actually like the roundabout. They're a good speed bump. However, in Rome, Italy, they're two, three lanes wide, which allows plenty of traffic flow, and the roundabout acts as a speed bump to meet slowing down the cars for safety. Supervisor Anderson, you brought up about sometimes with the four lanes, there's backup cars already. What about fire egress? Have we forgotten that? Have we forgotten what happened in North Park when all the business owners lost parking spaces and lost customers? And I'm from Chula Vista, Norah Vargas. Come on down to Broadway. We can see what happened when we took out lanes on Broadway. From Best Buy, which gets a lot of customers, it's one lane on Broadway, because you made the other lane into a bike lane. Anybody rides a bicycle on Broadway is a complete fool, because they're just risking their lives getting maimed. And I drive Broadway. I'm a merchandiser, and there is no bicycle. But it's literally a parking lot. Cars are backed up on Broadway, trying to get to Best Buy or go in the other direction, and then there's turnout, turn-ins, where it's more unsafe. But there's never bicycles down there. So do a survey, but don't call the Bike Coalition. Just simply do a survey on a regular day, make a week-long survey, and take a look. And you know. If you want to meet a climbing footprint, don't have the cars sitting there idling, and as electric cars take over, they need roads. Amazon needs roads. All these delivery truck drivers need roads. And to do that, to cut it down to one lane and take away parking from business owners, you're just going to amplify the problem and just hurt people. So like I said, take a look at what's happened in Third Avenue and Broadway in Chula Vista. Both fails, and literally there are parking lots in the street, cars are all backed up, waiting for the traffic light. Thank you very much, Board.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Man, that was so true. Non-Casa de Oro Alliance stakeholder truth here. I'm sure United Nations Minion Tara would have loved your absolute lies, Nathan. You know this will create traffic. Using $3 million in state debt dollars, the Campo Road Corridor will be used as a, quote, "infill area." Infill areas have higher densities and a greater mix of land users. Smart growth principles designed to streamline more housing with walking, biking, public transit, and vehicles through updated intersection traffic controls, wider sidewalks, and protected bike lanes in close. So let's just expose this Tara Bull item for what it is. First, there's the U.S. Department of Transportation's Complete Streets Plan to de-incentivize driving with obstacles, including these new intersection controls, roundabouts, bull bouts, less car lanes, and sustainable slime-green bike lanes. The smart growth principles are in alignment with the Sandag Regional Plan, which Jim likes to lie, saying he's against it, but he'll vote yes on this. Just watch. The Sandag Regional Plan covers smart cities with a high concentration of people, active transportation, walking and biking, and building high-density and mixed-use developments. That's businesses at the bottom levels of ugly, sustainable, slate-gray, stack-and-packed, prison-blocked housing projects. But not even Nora and Joel at Sandag came up with these plans. They're just useful idiot minions collecting a check. All of these totalitarian box ideas actually originate from the United Nations Agenda 21 Plan to control everyone's freedom of mobility. It's a required read for those of you that haven't read it yet. Live, work, and recreate all within Campo Road Corridor. Never leave your smart city mobility hub, just like in China, when people jump to their suicide desk. Green is the new red.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Oday Youssef, I am President, I am the Chair, excuse me, of the Valadioro Community Planning Group. I regret not being able to make it in person as I intended. Thank you to the Board members for your consideration of the Campo Road Corridor Revitalization Specific Plan. Thank you very much to the county staff for all their extensive and thorough work on developing this plan side by side with our community. As was stated earlier, the Valadioro Community Planning Group did vote unanimously to support and give our recommendation for approval of this project. It has been a long, long time coming, with stakeholders being involved from the beginning, with the community group being involved from the start. Casa de Oro and Campo Road is a very unique area, is a unique area in East County. It has a Spring Valley address, but it's not Spring Valley community. It's tied to Rancho San Diego and Mount Helix, but distinct from those areas as well. It's its own identity in East County and really now in the county as a whole. Your support of this plan would move the idea of Campo Road as an economic and residential center throughout the county and place it as an area of distinction during its growth and potentially for its entire future. I won't take up too much time, but thank you again for your consideration, and we look forward to working with the Board on implementing the provisions in this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
I just wanted to add that I also think that this is a great plan. Thank you to the Planning Department for all the great work that they've done, and I think using it as a model in other areas is going to be fantastic. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And Chair Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Thank you. We will now resume with non-agenda public comment. Click.
Thank you, Chair Vargas. We have 15 total requests to still speak on matters not listed on the agenda, all coming via phone. For those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now, using the instructions that were provided to you, and we will give you a moment to do so. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Hi, another phone check. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. My name's Alan. There's been a lot of talk about the fentanyl. We know it's a problem, the border is smug or whatever. But how are you going to solve it? Tied in with the homeless drug abuse. I quote John Hopkins, "Fentanyl opioids prescribed at hospitals are classed drugs that derive natural substances found in the opium poppy plant." Think about that. It's actually a legal prescription drug to the hospitals. Will this law dare to go after Big Pharma? Yeah, we can enforce it here locally, but we can send a message to Sacramento. It all starts here. Do you want to solve the fentanyl crisis? Let's take action on it. You can't do that today, but write something up and take action. Okay, let's go down to Chula Vista again. Health and Human Services down there by Harborside Park. The park has been closed because at Health and Human Services, a lot of homeless have been camping at the park. Dangerous to the school right next door. So they closed the park, ripped out the swings, because there's needles all over the ground, and now the park is deemed, they're talking about having the school take over. The school's all giddy, yeah, we'll take the park, but no, you don't want the park, because you've got all the drug abusers out there. The drug abusers right now parked out in the tent, and I call them that not being mean, but to show you what the real problem is. Anytime you provide services, let's walk up the street from that Health and Human Services, let's see what happens. Two tents, no, actually, there's three tents, I'm sorry, tables of free cell phones provided by the taxpayers. So they get a free phone. Walk up further, Starbucks shuttered, Payless Shoes shuttered, both, two cannabis shops right there in the Target parking lot. I know, I'm a merch. I work at Target, and I see all the time razors broken into and packages thrown in the men's bathroom, because homeless have no money, so they just steal the razor and shave right there, because they got to support the cannabis, which Health and Human Services writes up the medical cannabis.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am Mark Wilcox. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to share with you, your staff, and the listening audience important health information from the American Society of Regional Anesthesia and Pain Medicine, or ASRA. ASRA was calling for every American to be screened for marijuana before surgery due to risk of deadly reactions with anesthetics and pain meds. In addition to yesterday's recommendations, they suggested pushing surgery back at least two hours after a patient smoked weed, because patients are at a higher risk of heart attack if you're inhaling the drug and taking anesthetics. They also recommend that doctors should also cancel surgery when cannabis users appear to be high, because they cannot essentially consent without limitations. And doctors are concerned marijuana may interact with anesthetics and blunt the effect of pain medication post-op. Epinephrine in local anesthetics can cause the heart rate to increase due to the dilation of peripheral blood supply, thereby decreasing the oxygen saturation in the blood. Due to the effects of cannabis on the central nervous system, patients using it may require more local anesthetic than non-users. Selling pot in the unincorporated county is not a step forward to promote good health for our county residents. Our good health should not have become politicized, but rather supported by sound policies that do not include promoting or enabling marijuana or tobacco use or the sale of their products. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Yesterday, I wasn't able to complete my full message to the county. It's important for everybody to understand that about 70% of the planet has now been injected with COVID vaccines, and there's this unintended experiment that's now in progress. A paper was published in December, science immunology, titled "Class Switch Towards Non-Inflammatory Bike-Specific IgG4 Antibodies After Repeated SARS-Co2 mRNA Vaccination." It appears the mRNA vaccines are unique among all other vaccines, and that as vaccinations are repeated, the subclass antigen, IgG4, increases to unprecedented levels at the expense of reducing and in some cases eliminating the most common neutralizing antibody, IgG3. And this happens over the course of many months after vaccination. IgG4 tends to trigger phagocytosis, which can lead to inflammation, but the diminished IgG3 weakens the most prevalent viral immune response, not just for COVID, but for all viruses. The truth for now, scientists really don't know what the outcome will be. There's a difference in opinion, a big debate going on now, and the media just doesn't report it. Could be unprecedented rates of cancer on the horizon, perhaps a vaccine-induced AIDS. The excess death trends may indeed be a harbinger of something worse to come. Immunology is highly complex, but a good explanation of what's going on in layman's language is titled in the blog, "The Trainwreck of All Trainwrecks: Billions of People Stuck With Broken Immune Response," by a Dutch researcher. HHS should stop this vaccine campaign now. They should have stopped it a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
This is Peggy Walker. Like you Supervisors, I'm a health advocate, but I'm deeply frustrated that health prospects for our young people in 2023 are not promising. Fentanyl is now integrated into our drug supply, killing 850 San Diegans, some as young as 12, by June alone of last year. Too often, it impacts vulnerable minority communities. It's the leading cause of death of those 18 to 45, and caused one in five deaths among 15 to 24-year-old Californians in 2021. The DEA nabbed 379 million lethal fentanyl doses in '22. Drug overdose has escalated fivefold since 2000, according to news sources, driving U.S. expectancy, life expectancy, to its lowest level in 25 years below France and Germany. Dr. Nora Valkow, National Institute on Drug Abuse Director, said fentanyl mortality rate is equal to or exceeds COVID, and it demands a commitment to stopping easy accessibility. Yesterday, Superintendent Vargas said you are our safety net. You, then, our Board, can be our voice and commit to stopping easy accessibility by not caving to drug dealers' interests and enabling addiction through the free flow of fentanyl across our border. You can insist on, you can demand federal restoration of border control to stop it. This topic was finally brought yesterday at Mexican Talks. I ask you to be our voice and ask our administration to ensure that border control takes place. The border's right here in our backyard.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
Official disruptor truth here. The swearing-in ceremony on Monday was disgusting, discriminatory, and full of lies. County residents were inequitably treated as peasants, segregated to the balcony-nosebleed section, while the wannabe blue bloods got the chambers. They got a program printed on unsustainable, 100% cotton fiber paper. Plus, they got the pig-out-on catering from the Corner Bakery Cafe at the taxpayers' expense. Nora, what kind of chair are you if you couldn't even bother to show up to that reception? Selfies with Gump Kirk Andrew and Helen won't cut it, Nora. Here's one of Nathan's mini-lies yesterday.
I had the opportunity to go to college and opportunities to do things that other than my family did not have.
But here's Nathan from 2013.
Your biological dad's education, he went to college for four years, University of Oregon. Did you know he had gone to college for four years?
No, I was so little, I just, I don't remember it. I mean, coming up that much.
But the truth is that Nathan's father and his grandfather, Earl and Fletcher, went to college. You're still a liar, Nathan. Jim, you also lied yesterday, or Monday. The truth is, you vote in sync with your comrades, you approved VMT fees on housing, and you helped increase suicides by locking down the county. And lastly, here's one of DA Summer's lies.
Courts are there to determine and to guide and to make sure that our constitution is upheld and that everyone's rights are upheld, following our oath, not playing politics with people's safety.
So is she going to take up the case against the brutality unleashed upon Audra by Sheriff Deputy In Gonzalez, badge number 0283? Better heard on November 15th in these chambers? Of course not. She's a liar.
Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator with a focus on alcohol, tobacco, and drug prevention by youth. As we begin the new year, I respectfully ask the county to devote additional efforts into educating youth and adults about the risk of underage marijuana use and reducing access. There is a dramatic increase in funding and outreach to curb the horrific number of deaths due to fentanyl poisoning, including a dozen teens under 18 who died from opioids in 2021. But not enough attention is given to prevention. Dr. Renit Lev, an emergency medicine and addiction specialist at Chris Mercy Hospital, has said she hasn't seen a single fentanyl patient in the emergency department who hadn't started their drug use with marijuana. Last November, the Journal of Addiction Last November, the Journal of Addictive Behaviors published a study which found that among both adolescents and young adults, a reduced perception of harm from marijuana was associated with increased marijuana use. Yet today's high potency THC products are more dangerous than ever. Bait pods, waxes, dabs, and edibles contain nearly pure THC, which is known to change the adolescent brain, increasing the likelihood of a mental health crisis and strengthening the brain pathways for addiction. The 2022 Gallup poll showed that young people are now more than twice as likely to report smoking marijuana than cigarettes. Strategic public health policies and education successfully slashed the number of teens who smoke. Now it's time to do the same when it comes to marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Chair Vargas and supervisors, my name is Becky Rott. I'm a concerned parent and public health educator. Today, I'd like to bring to your attention an article published last week titled, "CNN: Number of the Young Children Who Accidentally Ate Cannabis Jumps From One, Jumped 1,375% in Five Years." According to the National Poison Data System, five years ago in 2017, there were only two hundred and seven cases of accidental edible exposure among kids under the age of six. By 2021, there were 3,054. In 2020 alone, young child accidental exposure to marijuana accounted for more than forty percent of all human poison exposure caused. These numbers are staggering. Many edibles come in the form of candies, cookies, brownies, and chocolate, products that all have a strong, high toddler appeal. Research has found that the packaging of some edible products can look identical to the real thing, such as Doritos, Nerds Rope, and Gusher Candy. Even if the package warns that the product contains marijuana or THC, it's often in small print. Young children will not notice the warning and most likely can't read it in the first place. A child's exposure to high THC products can have serious consequences. They can become very sick and have problems walking, sitting, or breathing. According to the CDC, a large number of cases led to a significant increase in intensive care admissions. I ask you to place stronger restrictions on high potency THC products, creating safeguards that have the potential to protect young children from accidental consumption. Increasing marijuana footprint in our unincorporated areas will only potentially intensify this unfortunate situation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Terri Anne Skelly. I'm a mother of three adult sons. Yesterday, I shared with the Board of Supervisors how pleased parents are that the state is devoting more funding for mental health issues that affects middle and high school students, college-age students, and young adults in general. Governor Newsom had expressed his concern about the age group of eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds because they have the highest rates of serious mental health illnesses and substance use disorders. The Bureau of Labor has also expressed their uneasiness about this age group since all demographics eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds have the lowest return to work rate after the pandemic. In December, Todd Canna-Berly, Executive Director of Data-Driven Economic Strategies, wrote in the Colorado Gazette an article entitled, "Why Are Labor Participation Rates Among Young Men So Low?" When she gave a recent presentation for the National Electrical Contractors Association, labor experts explored the complex reasons for this situation, especially that this age group, eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds, are undereducated as compared to young women. Labor and health experts cited two reasons, two factors. Number one, the increase in drug addiction, especially opioids, and number two, the increase of marijuana use, especially the daily use of marijuana, where the negative impacts of the amygdala play a large role on the brain's motivational receptors. The repercussions of marijuana businesses in the county that would make it more normalized for marijuana to be used among the teens and young adults interferes with their ability in long-term life choices. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker.
Kathleen Lipith here. Thank you for letting me speak. Drug abuse trends continue to rise. Sandag has continued to document those trends, providing reports that were originally intended to inform policy, but the policies seem to be coming before they pay attention to those reports, and ignoring the data has led us to the crisis of drug use that we are facing today. Most favored drug by youth by far that sets them on a path of drug abuse and addiction is the highly potent marijuana products, same products you will be permitting to be produced around your county. Recent report that shows local and state and federal are being overwhelmed by the indifference to drug abuse policies that help create addiction. The truth is hard to accept, but young Americans, often with minimal use and never imagining death or dying of drug overdoses are twelve times that of just two decades ago. It is easier to get addicted than to get out of addiction, and if death comes faster with higher drug purities, if marijuana legalization induces more to initiate and reduce inhibitions, leaving young people closer to the oncoming train of overdose death. What are we doing? The answer is we're setting up an exponential curve, higher numbers of initiates, innocents induced to think drugs will not kill them, as drug purity, availability, initiation, addiction, and overdose at an all-time high. Please look at prevention policies, please. Reinstate PSAs that inform the public of the dangers that their children and families face from initiation, use, and abuse.
Your time is up. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, and welcome. Chair Vargas, Ann Riddle here, parent advocate and grandparent watching children grow up. Had the opportunity reflect back on my first experience graduating from college, my first job was as a social worker. It was an abrupt opportunity to learn what the real world was all about, and I had that opportunity to learn about the damage that happens to children that is pretty much irreversible. And while I have a great respect for our ability to bounce back from negative experiences, let's not ever set aside that the things happen in childhood and the decisions made during adolescence are easily changed or rerouted, or in the case of adolescents going into treatment are successful. That wasn't my experience then, and it still isn't my experience now. The reason why I mention it is that the choice to use alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana is made before the age of eighteen, and every policy that we look at here at the Board of Supervisors ought to remind ourselves that we should choose policies that won't contribute to bad choice-making of our young people because it is so very difficult to reverse. One of the other things that I learned as a young social worker is what it looks like for children to grow up in home where drugs are being abused, and how much neglect occurs because of marijuana use. Now, we know today because of high-strength marijuana, we're seeing violence as well, but never underestimate the influence of neglect perpetrated on children by the adults in their home who are using marijuana. Let's not increase the footprint of marijuana stores front here in our county. This is an unwise policy, far more damage.
Your time is up. We'll go to the next speaker.
From Swallow, to the status slaves, my fellow tax cattle brothers and sisters. Are you expecting someone from the system to hold the system accountable for doing exactly what the system was designed to do? Are you sitting back trusting the plan and waiting for someone to subvert the entire system and save us all? The system was designed this way, and no one's coming to save us. We must act. We must save ourselves. We must be free. Now, time to step away and create a new system. You either want to be free, or you want to be controlled. There is no in-between. Reminder, some are not put here to evolve. They are here to remind you what it looks like if you don't. Too many people are suffering. It's time to evolve. It's time to change the system. It's time to get rid of these so-called leaders. Where are they leading us to? Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Vargas, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Thank you very much. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
The next regular meeting of the board will take place on Tuesday, January 24th, at nine AM.